Six thirty now, we call a meeting to order for Thursday, November ninth. Um, we all set there, Jake? You recording? Okay. Mr. Pinia, do we have a need for non-public this evening?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do RSA ninety-one A, Free Roman numeral two, lowercase e, pending litigation.
Thank you. First on our agenda items is going to be consideration of minutes, first set being from October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Members have any corrections, comments?
I'll make a motion to accept as written.
Second.
Motion made in second, and motion by Linda, seconded by Brian, to accept as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next set is for October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, I have one on October sixteenth on page four. It is the first motion. Um, it says, uh, move by, uh, Mr. Fernberg, seconded by Mrs. Mrs. Murray to reduce line, and it should be five, five, five. There's missing a five.
Okay.
That's the only one.
Anybody else? Did entertain a motion to accept them as amended?
Some.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Brian, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next set for October eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to accept them as written.
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Brian, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the last set for October twenty-third.
I'll make a motion and accept them as written.
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Brian, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. We have a one, two, three public hearings this evening. First one, the Wolfboro Board of Select will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November ninth, twenty twenty-three, at the Abenaki Ski Lodge, um, to consider an app, the application for issuance of an alcohol beverages permit to the Wolfboro Economic Development Committee, uh, for reception for area businesses on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, in the Great Hall at Town Hall from five P M. to seven thirty P M. Is anybody here to speak to that? If you come up to this mic here, please.
Yeah, I'm Barry Elliott, I'm on the E D C. And, uh, this is, uh, again, we did this last year at the Town Hall. It's our wrap-up with, uh, businesses and trying to, uh, engage them and find, uh, different, um, different avenues to find problems or solutions, or has anyone done something really well that they should be, um, allotted for? So, that's, uh, pretty much what we like to do, and we, we have more groups and some spirits, so that, uh, you know, kind of brings people out and brings it together for an hour or so, and they can all chat.
Okay. This time I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience here have any questions or comments?
I, oh, here is.
I'll close the public hearing, board members?
Yeah, I asked Amy to get the, a copy of the liquor license from the person who's going to be, um, serving the alcohol, and I haven't seen it yet, have they?
She, uh, she told me she did get it.
Okay.
Lucy did send me a copy. Would you like this?
It needs to go in.
Okay.
It should go to Jim. Okay? That's what I was looking for.
Amy did get a copy today, though.
And Brad, being on the E D C, I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay. Um, would we, do we need to see a, this is a, what town committee here, do we need to see a certificate of insurance for this, or?
It's our insurance.
It's our insurance, all of us, so with that, okay. Did entertain a motion then?
Make a motion to issue a temporary event permit for the First Congregational Church to host an evening of worship service at Kate Park, December twenty-first.
Wrong one.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. Issue instant alcohol beverage permit to the Wolfboro Economic Development Committee, Town of Wolfboro, for reception for area businesses on November thirteenth in the Great Hall, at Town Hall, from five P M. to seven thirty P O.
Second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Dave, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'll abstain, I'm an alternate to the E D C.
Okay. And Brian abstained too?
Yep.
I see they were in different order in my packet, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Now we'll jump up to the first one here, the Wolfboro Board of Select will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October eighteenth, um, should be November ninth.
Right.
Um, to consider a temporary event permit for the First Congregational Church to host an evening worship service at Kate Park on December twenty-first, from four thirty P M. to six thirty P M. Permit number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three. Do we have anybody here from the church to, okay, would you like to come up and?
Uh, the church is just requesting use of Kate Park, close to the gazebo, to have a longest night of the year candlelight service.
Okay. I'll open up a public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Sign now, close the public hearing, board members? Any questions, comments, motion?
I'll try this one again. Temporary vet, issue temporary vet permit for the First Congregational Church to host an evening of worship at, uh, Kate Park on December twenty-first, December thirty-first, sorry. December twenty-first, from four thirty P M. to six thirty P M. Permit number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three.
Second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Brian, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're all set with that. Uh, the next one, Wolfboro Board of Select will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November ninth, um, to consider the application for issuance of an alcoholic beverages permit to the Lakes Region Curling Association for their end-of-season award ceremony on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, at the Abenaki Ski Lodge, the three ninety Pine Hill Road. Anybody here to present this one?
I think they've done this other years here.
Yeah, they have, yes. I'll open up a public hearing anyway, so anybody in the public have any questions or comments on this one? Sign now, close the public hearing, board members?
Uh, move to issue an alcohol beverage permit to the Lakes Region Curling Association for their end-of-season award ceremony on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, at the Abenaki Ski Lodge, from three ninety Pine Hill Road, from six thirty P M. to eight thirty P M. Um, and that's it.
I'll second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Linda, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Next is our bulk vote. We have some weekly manifests in here for October twentieth of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred, plus or minus dollars, October twenty-seventh for six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, and November third for one million five hundred sixty-eight thousand, fifty-eight dollars. Um, is also, show the page here, intent to cut, uh, timber on one oh nine A, there's a property tax credit exemption on Mulberry Court, and raffle permit for Wolfboro Friends of the Library, um, to hold a raffle there. Did you obtain a motion?
Move that we approve Wolfboro A two D.
Second.
I don't see a raffle permit, um, picture.
Oh, there's no picture, is there?
There's no picture.
Are we supposed to have one? I think we were. I mean, I don't see a problem with approving it, but if they can send in a, uh, copy of the picture, then I'm.
The problem was, probably, is that.
Yeah, yeah. So I have no problem accepting it as long as, um, they supply us with a, a copy of the picture and the raffle.
So that.
I moved that we accept, and then he brought it up.
Okay. So we got a second?
Dave second.
Motion by Linda, seconded?
No, I, no, Dave made, I second.
I made the one.
Motion by Dave, I'll get this straight sooner later.
Yep.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Linda, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. No border committee appointments under new business, um, commercial vessel landing permit for twenty twenty-four, the Millie B.
Good evening, uh, I'm Chip Bearwiler, I'm with the New Hampshire Boat Museum and manager of the Boat Excursions Program, and we are applying for next summer for the two thousand twenty-four season for our commercial voting permit, that we can continue our tradition down there, we're providing educational trips out on the lake, and for everybody to enjoy what we have here in the area.
That sounds good. Linda?
Yeah, I have a question. This has to do with more of our bookkeeping. This is a two thousand and twenty-four permit. When will we book the revenue?
Twenty twenty-four.
You'll, so they pay it, you book it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm assuming when the new certificate of insurance comes available, you'll send one over to us.
What's that?
A certificate of insurance.
Yeah, uh, reinsurance gets renewed June first, so as soon as Martha gets that in, she gets it right over to you.
So I know, but I'm sure we have the current one on file now, so.
Yeah, current one, so.
Yep. Board members? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the commercial vessel landing permit, twenty twenty-four for the Millie B, pound dogs.
Second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Luke, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I'll look to you to the dogs.
Next on our agenda is appointment for Josephine Amatucci for a raffle at the library. I won't see her here tonight. Should we act on this anyway, or?
No.
What should we, what's the board's?
I just think that we, uh, she had it noted in the minutes that she did not attend, and we took no action on the raffle.
Okay.
That would work for me.
Yep. Just make that note in the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Next on the agenda, capital reserve expenditure for the Water Resource Fund.
So Steve's here to talk a little bit about this, as, uh, you're well aware, we've got, um, some issues on White Gate, uh, relative to stormwater runoff from the Maplewood subdivision area. Um, Steve's worked diligently to, uh, come up with a scope of work, uh, and we're looking for, um, eighty thousand dollars. Now, forty thousand of that will be reimbursable through the Lake Winnipesaukee Association, uh, if we so desire to approve this. I'll leave it at that.
Jim actually pretty well summed it up. Um, we have an estimate to do eighty thousand dollars worth of survey and initial mapping to, um, coincide with the grant, uh, to try to stop erosion into lake. That's the sum of its parts.
Okay. Linda?
Yeah, I brought this before, uh, before I start, I want to thank Steve for coming and attending Wolfboro Waters Committee and trying to help us understand the full, um, scope of this project, but the Wolfboro Waters Committee supports improving water quality going into our lakes. The Wolfboro Waters, uh, Committee has made no recommendation as to whether the Board of Selectmen should approve or not approve the request to use the water quality fund, since the committee had many questions and requested more information to be provided to the Board of Selectmen to make this decision. Here's a list of the Wolfboro Waters questions that were not able to be answered on our November seventh meeting. Has this grant received governor and council approval? Why is the town fronting the full amount instead of the Lake Winnipesaukee Association? If the town pays the full amount and is repaid forty thousand, what is the mechanism to return the funds to the Ca, Capital Reserve account? What is the estimate completion date, uh, um, so the funds can be repaid? Is there an implementation part of the grant, and is there funding? What is the town's percentage? And that forty thousand is larger than any other partnership with three nineteen grants? Here is a list of the project that Wolfboro Waters has slated for the Wolfboro Qu, for the Water Quality Capital Reserve account. Upgrade the filter at the Public Safety Building to improve the quality of the water entering Crescent Lake. The Wetworth Watershed Association has applied for a three nineteen grant to address Crowe N. Road in Kingswood Acres for, uh, stormwater runoff issues identified in their watershed management plan. If the three nineteen grant is awarded in late November or December, the Board of Selectmen would like to ask to match the Wolf, the Wetworth watershed contribution for their three nineteen, uh, grant match. The change to the Russ Pond three nineteen grant to address new issues caused by the July sixteen storm and the washout of two beaver dams. The board will be asked to contribute to the new grant slash project for water, from the Water Quality Capital Reserve account. It is still unknown whether there is enough state of New Hampshire funds to address stormwater runoff from two, the Route twenty-eight project. One of the items may be retention basis. I would like to table this request until November fifteenth, so that that backup information can be provided to the board, and it'll give me a chance to meet with Jim and have some conversations on how we're going to move forward, uh, spending the money out of that account. So I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and this, by Linda, seconded by Luke, to table it. Any other discussion from the board? I just go say, because I was at the Wolfboro Waters meeting there too and stuff, and there were, as Linda pointed out, there's a lot of, uh, projects on the, on the, on the plate there for the, for the board to be working on and stuff, um. But this, probably don't have all the amounts for some of these three nineteen grants for value, or how much they're asking for contributions yet, do we? So that's part of what we need to.
Yeah, I think part of it is just, there's those questions, I'd like to have some of that information. I think, uh, Steve got some of that information, and it has not gone out to the full board. I'd like that, the information and get it into the packet for the next meeting. Um, there just was a lot of, uh, questions, and I want to make sure we have those kind of answers, and have a clear direction on how this project is going to move forward.
And I don't believe by, by deferring it to the, you know, uh, December meeting, um, well, actually, the, it's next week's meeting, right?
Yeah, it's next week. It's not, we're not doing a long period of time.
It's not going to hurt the, the process at all, or anything. I just want to bring those things up, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so we'll review that on the fifteenth. Okay. Next up is discussion on, I'll get the, Jim, here, on warrant articles.
Okay, so you should have received an updated, uh, booklet on warrant articles. I'll quickly try to summarize where we're at, if we follow the recommendations I have. Um, right now, um, under the general fund, if we follow the recommendations, uh, CAC ask would be one million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, with four hundred and fifty-five thousand from donations, or revolving fund, and then one bond in the amount right now of one point two million for the upgraded Potwell, uh, Fort Woodland project. Uh, I've got numerous email correspondence over the past couple of days from, uh, Stam CAC, and I'm trying to catch up with those, so I would anticipate more information regarding that Fort Woodland project at our next meeting. As far as the sewer fund is concerned, uh, two projects I'm recommending, uh, two hundred thousand dollars each. One is for self-main, street sewer engineering, uh, and the other is for wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund. The water fund, recommending, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two projects. Seasonal water lines, uh, we need to get some of that work complete, and then, and to use up some of the bond pursuits that we have remaining, and then, um, a water line along Highland Terrace to tie in a loop system to alleviate a couple of our bleeds. Um, those are definitely priority projects. Recommending the, uh, Oak Street, River Street project, be put on hold for a year. And then, uh, under the electric fund, Barry has, uh, a request for a truck, and we discussed it last time, I haven't had a chance to talk with Barry yet, um, but there's also a thought about, um, putting money into Capital Reserve Trust for his building. Um, so if we were to look at this all, we have, um, we'd have one point two million in bonds, uh, two point eight million dollars in warrant article funds, offset by six hundred and nineteen thousand of monies coming from other projects, for a total, um, warrant cost minus operating budgets of four point six million dollars. Uh, so if you want to go through them really quickly, I can try to summarize them. Obviously, we have our operating budget, which is, uh, started review with the Budget Committee last night, and I heard it went fairly well, all in all. Uh, second warrant article would be town road upgrades, nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, provided you s, with a spreadsheet, uh, from Steve Randall, Director of Public Works, that spreadsheet outlines a series of three options. Um, those options are nine hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars, and three hundred thousand dollars, uh, for you to consider. Uh, pretty standard language, the only difference is, as you, uh, saw from the audit report, we do not have the funds to be able to use unassigned fund balance, so this will be a tax rate impact for the twenty twenty-four warrant.
We have a, a sheet here, which you gave us, or he gave us, imagine, that what we could do if we cut that amount down, um, and I don't know where any of the other board members are, or whether we want, whether you want us to talk about that now.
It, it's, it's your discretion, I mean, you can certainly talk about it, ask Steve questions, he's here to answer them, uh, or, or look at it, process it, and, and, um, be prepared to answer, ask questions at, at the next round, it's up to you, you guys. I know you just got this, um, so you haven't had an opportunity to process it.
So we'll have another opportunity later to?
Oh, yeah.
We're just kind of generally going over it tonight? Okay, well, then I'll wait until then.
Yeah, that'd make sense to kind of digest it a little bit.
Yeah.
I just have a question, do we have to follow option one, two, or three, or can we make our own option?
You can certainly make your own, you have good luck now.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is Oak and River Street, uh, upgrades, recommending to remove this from the twenty twenty-four warrant. Um, we've got enough waterline projects and road projects and enough on the taxpayer that, um, this seven hundred thousand dollars can be pushed off a year.
I, I have a question, I went and I looked at the C I P., and then I went back to the water and sewer rate study, to look to see what we had, what items we had in that, uh, study, and the Highland and Maplewood is there for a water line, but last year's Green Street water line was not. And so I would like us to take a look at what we had projected to be used out of this fund, and what exactly we have done. Because the, the bonded, uh, seasonal water line was there, uh, the, the, uh, money for the water treatment plant was there, the, uh, seven hundred and twenty for the vintage water main was there, um, and then there was a hundred and twenty-five for water line upgrades. I don't know whether we did that, there are a couple other places, and I would like us to go look at that and make sure we're okay in terms of the, the fund itself, because we haven't done exactly what's in there.
So I'm going to put Steve on the spot a little bit, uh, we're, we're contracted to have that rate analysis done. Have you heard anything?
We haven't got it back yet.
We haven't gotten it back. I, I know there's a bunch of correspondence from Megan, um, from Underwood regarding updating that, so he hasn't heard anything, and I, I haven't processed all my emails yet.
Well, I just was looking at that, and so I, I want us to make sure we get that clear before we decide to go forward with, um, any water projects this year.
Okay. Uh, for Woodland, um, obviously, this is going to be a bond, um, this is going to get much more wordy, um, as we go forward. I anticipate giving this off to legal counsel, um, early next week for input, um, but recall, we, we had reauthorized, or we will have to reauthorize some funds, um, the acceptance of funds and, um, the expansion of the project.
Did we have to get any easements in here?
Any easements? Um, I, they're working on them, I believe.
I think so, might even be all done in a minute, or closer to it.
Okay, that, that would be important, that we know that, because we've run into problems where we don't have those all done beforehand.
I'm pretty sure those all said, I think we're about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, library landscaping, again, this is, uh, just reauthorization to, for the trustees to be able to accept funds, um, because the project was put on hold because of the Public Safety Building. There was, um, I heard talk about them scaling back their, um, plan for their landscaping, making it a little simpler. I don't know if it's true or not, that's what I've heard, haven't heard. Um, and then the next one is the library solar, anticipating, uh, hundred and ninety thousand dollars, are actively pursuing grants, um, for a ninety K W., ninety-six K W. rooftop unit. Um, again, this would be funded through grant opportunities and, um, donations, so it would have no tax rate, payer impact. Community Center Engineering, um, we do have, uh, existing Capital Reserve Funds that, uh, we do believe can be purpose for this. We've reached out to the trustees of trust funds to clarify, but we believe that we can remove this, um, as a warrant article, and use those trust fund monies.
I guess I have a question that why we would do it, when we, on the C I P., looked at two thousand and twenty-seven, um, for a building for the community center. It seems like, even though we have trust funds money, it seems like awful early to start doing any kind of designs.
The only thing I could say to that is, we did start the Public Safety Building in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe, um, and, you know, we're still, I think the chief can tell you, we're running up to some issues in the, the design that, um, aren't completely mapped out, that we're still working through, but, I, I mean.
Well, that's my.
This, this, this body said that we need to do something to the building, um, you know, and I don't know if, it's, it's your direction, what you want to do, and I'm not sure if Christine wants to speak on behalf of this building or not. It's a project that we've got to look at.
I'd just see something done to the existing building soon, you know, I walked through it yesterday, and walked around it, uh, I couldn't get upstairs, because it's, it's locked, but something needs to be done there. So, I've been, I've been talking to some people and trying to get some, uh, you know, once we have the, I want, you know, the, I want to see the, the lead report, but I've been trying to get some people to volunteer, maybe volunteer some materials for siding and stuff like that, and get some local people interested in getting at least the front of the building cleaned up a little bit.
So I did pass Steve Randall with, uh, security and quotes after the last meeting. Steve, I'm going to guess you might have something to say.
I do. Uh, I did meet with two contractors in the last week, um, with, to come up with different options for that, closing the windows, siding, looking at various things.
Good.
Well, I, I'm back to, you know, we right now have an operating budget at, with a seventeen percent increase. We've got, we've only done one half of the Public Safety Building. We haven't really taken the full hit on the ambulance contract and stuff, and I think we've got an awful lot on the plate of the voters and the taxpayers. And while I support a community center, it seems like this is, may have to go out a number more years, just for us to be able to, to deal with the amount of debt and projects that we have. We have the Route twenty-eight, uh, project coming in, we are doing the water line, we have the sewer line going down from Pickering Corner. I think they come both in at about four million. I think there is an amount of debt and increases to the tax rate that people can handle, and that's why I'm saying, you know, um, I'm fine taking it out, but I am concerned about moving forward on this with what I believe is an awful lot on our plate.
Well, I agree with the, yeah, the, anything towards a new community center, I think that's going to have to be pushed back, hopefully. I think that's going to have to be pushed back, hopefully. Because some of the debt doesn't even start falling off till after 2029 in some of these projects. So 2027, I would think, seems premature.
Yeah, I mean, but that's where they put it, at this particular point in time. You know, and this would be '24. That seems a lot earlier than, and knowing that we may very well have to move it out from there.
So for the purpose of this document, we're going to be removing this?
Correct.
Similar conversation regarding the Libby Museum. You have capital reserve fund naming in excess of $310,000. And you have a Sharif account for donation, which is unrestricted, which, you know, we're not going to know until Bergeron gets in there. And I actually just got a correspondence while I was gone, that he's prepared to go in there and do the work to make a, give us an informed plan moving forward as to what to do with the Libby Museum.
So we have about 350, about 400 that we have.
There's 76 now in the Sharif account, right?
That sounds about right, Brian.
Yeah, it was 90, and we had to use a little, so yeah, we got it.
So we got about $400,000.
So we can deal with, I think.
Some repairs, yeah.
Are we good with removing this?
Yep.
I think so.
Police vehicle. It's my understanding that there's approximately $15,500 in the revolving fund. They've already had to dispose of the cruisers because of failure of inspection. So we're looking at a total of $74,000. And they, I think they're down three cruisers right now. Good. Public Works Vehicles Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve Fund. We're looking at $380,000. Steve has a plan and is actually actively working with contractors or vendors on getting updated pricing. I think this is one of those items that the prices continue going up and the lead times continue getting longer. And when the lead times are getting longer, prices still go up. So this is a battle that we're going to continue to fight. But he's also got some major fleet issues. If you remember, a few years back, we replaced the motors in a couple of vehicles. One of those went pretty well. Another one has not gone so well. So he's got some fleet problems. If you've got questions, he's the one to ask.
Based on the CIP, it looks like we're going to put the 380 in, and we're going to take 370,000 out. So we're almost putting in and out based on what came to the CIP.
So we did change that. I don't know if that's not updated, because I did take out some of the things that you had asked for the expenditures out of there.
Okay, so we need an update.
So we're, right now, looking to put 380 in and take 300,000 out.
And that's for a truck and a tractor?
Truck and for half of the skid steer that we're splitting with the water department. That's based on preliminary pricing.
Okay. So here, I'm the Grinch today. You're asking for 380,000. Last year, we put in 300,000. This is, you know, and from that, I think we were about 196 the year before. So we're moving in upgrade. But so if we cut this amount back, you can still get the things you need for this year?
I can. But the problem lies in two to three years from now, when we are well over 400 to 450 to replace things. So I have that set up so that we never crest over 4 to 420 over the next decade. If we don't stay on that process, we'll have to spike to 450 within a year or two. Or we don't replace.
Yeah, I'm looking at, and depending upon where that operating budget comes, I just want us to look at this as one of the ones that we can still get you what you need.
Yep, understood.
And if we are hunting for some money, this is one I think we could lower. That's how I personally look at it. I'm not going to ask you to do it, you know, but if we can go through with it, I will. But if we're, I'd prefer to us cut things back than to have a whole lot go down.
I think she's saying, can you sharpen your pencil?
So if I have to sharpen my pencil, I would rather keep that alone and take it out of the roads. If I don't have the equipment, I can't maintain the roads. So if I have to lose 80 grand, take it.
Out of the road.
Take it out of the roads.
I can go through that.
Because my, if you look at my operating budget and my maintenance line is, I think we put in for 155 for next year. I'm at 165, 170 already this year, and we haven't even hit the bad times. So my repair bill every year is approaching 200. So that would be my ask, I guess.
I would support him with that.
I'm, I'm, I'll bargain with you. I'll take it. I just, we're going to have to do something somewhere.
Sure, and I get that. But if we have to do, that would be the trade-off that I would ask for.
Okay, thank you.
Eddie, we got a meeting coming up in the next couple of days. It's Wednesday.
Yes, Monday.
So when we meet next time, we'll have some probably more refined pricing.
Okay.
Vision of adjustments we can make, hopefully downward. We'll do that.
Yes, we don't want to go to the.
I'm not going to hold my breath on it. Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund, recommending we remove this from the 2025, or 2024 warrant. I had a conversation with Steve. He's good with this. We've got money, a balance of funds left in the Capital Reserve Fund. He's been able to get some work done. And the problem is, we can't get a contractor in here to do the smaller scope work. So it seems like this is a good place to be able to make up 100,000. Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund, 50,000, recommending we keep it there.
Yeah, and I pulled, I asked Casey to give me a printout on what we had in capital reserve funds. And she has what the 2023 withdrawals will be at the end of the year, we'll have $51,492. And I think adding 50,000 to it is what we're going to need. We almost wanted a little higher. But I think we'll have enough to cover what we need.
The next one, so this is going to be an interesting conversation. So Water Resources Non-Capital Reserve Fund. We've traditionally put $50,000 in this. We've got multiple projects going on, as you heard this evening as well. When the public safety building was originally designed, we did a lot of engineering at the rear of the property to accept the stormwater created by the new buildings and the additional impervious grounds. That's accepting that water nicely. It should not be a problem going forward. When it was all designed, the thought process from the engineers was we keep the front of the building status quo, which is, that's the way it's engineered. And then that's the way it was also priced out. So we don't have a whole lot of money in our balance with the public safety building project if that jellyfish system that the Wolfboro Waters Committee has spoken of gets placed to the front of the building. The estimate of that project is in excess of $250,000. And we don't have the money in that project to be able to take that on. So this is a conversation piece. What would the board like to do going forward? Obviously, you're going to want more information. And I can work on getting that for you. But this is going to be a challenging one now. You know, the thought process from the engineers was the front of the building, we're not really changing anything as far as the stormwater that is going into the system. So therefore, we're not going to treat. However, to the back of the building with the new buildings and the additional impervious grounds, they took that under advisement to put in the stormwater treatment system. And the back rear of the property is being treated and taken care of. However, the front is not receiving that same type of attention.
I will want to point out one thing, that last year, we put 100,000, that this is a cut in the amount. And I can live with 50 this year. And no, we may not have the money to do the jellyfish. That jellyfish will do the best job that we can do to solve a lot of the issues that are happening across Lake. And it's coming out and through that whole process. So I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, and that jellyfish system, the amount of nutrients that is probably going to pull off of that area that's coming pretty much directly off the roof and hitting the ground and going into the ground in the treatment system probably isn't.
It's one side that it's coming off of. You know, we don't need to get into that. It's just that I feel comfortable putting it from 100 to 50 with what we've got going. I'm not willing to get, I've given some thought of not funding it at all, but I'd like to look and talk to you and see where we are in some of those other projects and to see if, you know. I mean, we're looking for it anywhere.
I think also keep in mind too, on the, if we're talking about the jellyfish system at the public safety building, the design that we're working off of now that was bid on does include some, a couple of Filtrex systems in the front too. So there is some additional treatment being done with the front section. It's not like we put it, so there's nothing being done at all if we don't end up being able to fund the jellyfish, so.
And we learned that when the guy came into chat, presentation about the jellyfish to get a better understanding of Filterra, I think is what is in, is in there now.
So the next one, we've got three options for a groomer. Unless Chuck wants to speak to it more definitively. I haven't received anything that tells me that this machine needs to be replaced today, unless Chuck has got some updated information. So I'm recommending that we reel this back to the $25,000. And you should be able to ask Chuck any questions you have about the groomer.
Again, at the end of this year, we're supposed to have 79,262. And then we would add 25,000 to that, which would get us pretty close to 100,000 in that capital reserve account, which I think is a pretty good amount.
Okay. So the next article would be tree removal and replacement expendable trust. This was created back here in the amount of $125,000. Recommending that we continue to place money in this in the amount of $25,000 this year. I think anybody who's driven along South Main Street can see that those diseased and dead trees have been removed. And it actually is, looks much better.
Yeah, I'd say very definitely.
And once that South Main Street project is done, you know, obviously, we want to use some of these money, monies for plantings along there so that we can get some trees back in the ground. But Steve, can you answer any questions you have about this moving forward? Using agreement with the 25,000. Okay, next item up, municipal electric. Barry's looking for an electric truck. Right now, the number's 325 based on CIP, but I think Barry's going to tell you that price is probably going to have to go up because the cost of these trucks are going up and the time, lead time is problematic. Barry?
Yeah, I think I crafted this at the budget level, but I'd like to increase that number to 400,000. And it's exactly right, the lead times are stretching out so much, and nobody is holding pricing. And so unfortunately, I think that's the number, 400 versus 325.
When, if you ordered a truck today, how long would it take to get it?
They inform me if I ordered it right now, I'd get it at the end of 2024. If I order it in the spring, I'll be mid-2025. So it's quite a lead time. It's the chassis are one thing. Then it's three components, the chassis, the aerial lift, and then the body.
Can we do 200,000 this year, 200,000 next year, and push the truck back six months? It's only going to be six months because it's taking so long to get it anyways.
I'm not sure how that, I mean, we're not at a cash flow problem with the electric department. I'm not sure what that does for us, Brian. Because this doesn't hit, this comes out of your enterprise fund.
This will be funded from the, from our fund balance. Which is in excess of six.
Yeah, it was six point.
And isn't it part of your cycle?
It is. These are built into our rate breakdown. So I don't know if it really does a lot. It's not going to increase our rate. It's already built in there. So I'm not sure.
So we'll have more details. It's 400,000 dollar price tag as opposed to 325.
Yep.
And the next article, I just, I inked this. Haven't had the chance to sit down and talk with Barry yet. But this was the result of the removal of the monies for the capital outlay for building repairs, engineering upgrades at the MED Building on Middleton Road. So not to put Barry on the spot, but if this is something Barry is interested in, it does give us the mechanism with you as the agents to expand, to be able to continue moving forward, to make improvements to that building, not only aesthetically, but with it being a critical infrastructure to be able to keep the building and the very valuable equipment inside protected. Barry, do you have anything you want to add?
We haven't had a producer speak a lot about this. I think it's a good thing. I'm not real sure, being that these projects are funded from our fund balance anyway, if it's that big of a deal besides just getting preapproval sort of situation. If we were going to do it, I'm not going to argue against it certainly, I'd like to see it be more related to, or, you know, extend it out to include the grounds. We have three outbuildings, you know, so not only the main building, but perhaps. But again, I, we generally have pretty well supported. Yeah, it's a thought, I respect that.
I'd like to see it built into the rates. And I think you can, you could set it in the enterprise fund itself, I'm assuming. You can keep on accumulating it. Or if you want to do a capital reserve account, that you take that money out of your pocket. I think we did it with the sewer fund, that we took some excess sewer fund money and made a capital reserve account. So it would be some of your excess funds we would then do, opposed to going on to the tax rate.
Well, yeah, this, I would not see this going on the tax rate. This would be as.
Yeah, this would be funded from.
Yeah, but it would, we're taking it where you're accumulating it. You're having for the trucks. You have all your capital items and your major upgrades, all in the rates.
Correct.
And you manage it all to take some money and then start giving it over to the trustees of trust funds for projects.
Yeah, we try to build a little bit of like 350,000 is generally what our margin is after we.
So does.
I think Barry and I, we can talk about this over the coming week and get a legal opinion about this fund balance and what we may be able to do with it if you guys can authorize those expenditures on the fly if needed.
Yeah, we can further talk about that.
Catch up. Right now, we'll leave that on. Next one is seasonal water lines, $150,000 for buried water lines on McCarthyana Drive, Museum Shores. We do have a balance of funds remaining from a bond from a couple of years ago that we have to use up. And this actually takes the greatest number of users off of the seasonal water lines. And we're actually preparing to do core borians in December to see if it's feasible or if we've got ledge issues. Steve, can you answer any questions specific that you may have?
I have a question. Am I correct that the reason we're doing that is because we have issues with the seasonal water line? And with bacteria, or we couldn't keep them? There was something that I remember saying that there was a reason why we really needed to do this.
Yes, and we also have a mandate to do away with them over the next, from DES over the next, I want to say four or five years, don't confuse that number, but.
We can put that in the backup. We, we can put that in the backup for the presentation, absolutely.
How much is in our warrant fund?
It's about a million dollars. And the, the state, it's my understanding, as long as we continue to show improvements on the seasonal water lines, they're, they're happy.
And that's why I'd like that study, because that'll give us, because this will come out, this will have an impact. But then I'm concerned that we have enough money...
I'm hoping to see that shortly. I'll push on it, I'll send an email out tomorrow.
Okay.
Push that a little bit.
Okay, so the next one, similar water main installation from Helen Terrace, Maplewood, eight hundred feet of six inch line, I think it is. This is an area where we have a bleed that runs constantly. We're already in the process of securing easements and doing the engineering. And we're hopeful to actually, if this passes warrant, that we'll be basically have a shovel-ready project for once the road ends electric.
Okay, question, that's a section of Maplewood we didn't redo?
Correct. So we, yeah, it's the Maplewood extension, so if you go into Berrywood and take a right.
Okay.
So we won't be digging up any of the new road.
That's good to put that in the things we say. Thank you very much, you made my day on that.
Okay, water treatment plant upgrades, recommending that a hundred thousand get removed. Waste water treatment, this is two hundred thousand. I believe at the last meeting, you saw Dave Didion, he provided the estimate for us. He'd like about three hundred thousand, I was able to talk to him, we were able to get this at two hundred thousand and continue to move forward to make improvements at the waste water treatment plant. This is what we've put in the past couple of years. And we've spent about a hundred and sixty this year. Uh, next one is South Main Street, Center Street, from, excuse me, South Main Street and Center Street to the Smith River Bridge. This would be engineering for sewer lines along that path so that we can score much higher for state regorging loan funds and hopefully get this to a point of construction in the next two years. Steve's got more information that I cannot probably answer for you.
Well, I see that it's scheduled on the CIP for two thousand and twenty-five. Is that going to be moved out or are you going to try to get it done?
For construction?
Yep, that's what it's...
So, in a perfect world, we're going to start construction on the water in the spring. And we get it hopefully done in the twenty-four season. Worst case, we go into spring of twenty-five, water will be complete. We then can start sewer in fall of twenty-five and start the cycle again.
Sewer pump station upgrades. I think with where we're at, I, I would keep this in here for right now, but until we get the Barney and Sewell Road, Forest Road extensions complete, this is on a shortlist to be pulled off. I don't know, Brad, do you think we'll get that to substantial completion this year?
I think we will on Sewell and Forest. I'm not so sure about Barney Road, we did have to stop there because of the amount of ledge we hit. We're wanting to be sure that we hit Sewell and Forest Road being, you know, is that as, obviously it was a priority for us. They are working down there right now, we did hit ledge down there yesterday. We knew there was going to be some ledge and it's, it's, it's not bad, it's not nowhere near as bad as it was down on Barney Road, put it that way. So, fingers crossed.
Made us feel a little better.
Yeah. So I would say, we'll be meeting with the contractor in the next week or so to come up with a plan for Barney Road to what we anticipate we'd be able to button up for this year and what would be left over for spring to, to finish up. We should have a good, a good budget number at that point too, what the whole thing will come in at, so we know what was left over.
So we can leave this on for right now, hopefully after Brad's next meeting with the contractor, we'll have a better idea of where we're at, we're giving it a substantial completion. The next two articles are similar. It's a purchase and a lease option for Parks and Rec for a tractor. So pretty straightforward to raise an appropriate sum of a hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new Parks and Rec creation tractor and attachments. And then very similar language with some blanked-out areas for which option we'd do for leasing if we were. If we're going to put this to warrant article, I don't think it's worth effort to do the lease, in my opinion, based on the paperwork.
Just looking at begin the paperwork.
It's just raise an appropriate a hundred thousand.
Well, and, and then I think this is one we, we, we put a, a look at, if we put it on now. Let's look at it as we come down. And this to me would, whether I would support this going forward will have to do with where we are with the operating budget.
Yeah, maybe we can put half aside this year, half aside next year, and buy the tractor next year.
We don't have any capital reserve accounts for Parks and Rec equipment, do we?
Maybe we should.
Maybe that, maybe that is a way. I mean, I think you need it, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm just looking at, you know, if we come out with a sixteen point five percent increase in the budget, I'm just, you know, I'm just afraid of what may happen. Because I did come onto the board of selectmen with a default budget and only four hundred thousand passed in warrant articles, so if they get...
The only thing I would say, the hard part is, you know, one of, one of the major uses for this is to clean up around these two facilities here. So if, if we put it off a year, even if we buy it in this coming year, it's not really going to get used until the twenty-twenty-five season. If we put it off, it won't get used until the twenty-six season. So I, I think that, again, I, I think if we were doing this in the budget, you know, the, the, the the lease was a good option, but if we're, if we're going to ask for it, we should just ask for it outright. Again, it would require a three-fifths majority on the vote, so.
Why can't, what is, what makes it more complicated to us, warrant articles of lease?
Because you're committing monies for future years. So you want, the thought is they want more support to be able to approve that funding for future years.
What if you, what if you put the amount of the lease in a capital reserve fund? And we funded the capital reserve fund at seventeen, whatever the lease price is, could you do it that way?
No, so I actually had, I had a lengthy conversation and I'll, I'll pull up the email strings with the attorney partner regarding capital reserve funds and leasing.
Okay.
And he came back with a pretty good opinion on it. Capital reserve funds are for capital expenditures and not leasing.
Now, with a lease, you can put down a lot of money or a little money on the lease. So we could put, we could put down half of the hundred thousand for the lease and then have a short-term lease or a very short-term lease on it, would that make it easier?
Then you're back to having a higher vote, right?
And this lease is like, it's more of, it's a lease to purchase, like at the end of this lease, it's a dollar, whatever it is.
My feeling is, at some point, we're going to have to sit down with all these warrant articles and take a look at what the whole public, we're asking for. So I'm, all I'm saying here, I want to take, put this on the look. I'm not willing to take it out now, but I, I think it is...
So the way I'm thinking about it is instead of, instead of doing a hundred thousand now, if we did fifty thousand dollars down on the lease, we're only asking for fifty thousand for this year of our budget. And then the lease would be, would break out into, you could do a three-year or a four-year or whatever, a short-term lease going forward. And then they, it, it's a way to spread out the tax impact and to get it now, instead, but not coming in with a whole hundred thousand now.
You know, what would happen if, when that fifty thousand ran out, we owe fifty thousand and the voters said no?
Well, I think it would be all in the warrant article.
Okay, so we lay it out like that?
Oh, absolutely, you have to lay it all out. So if, if they said yes, then they would give...
Fifty thousand, that's twenty thousand a year for the next three years, all done, and we just...
So, I mean, the other way to look at it is, if you were to do fifty thousand, that's two cents on the tax rate. If you do a hundred thousand, that's four cents on the tax rate.
And we got twenty-six cents from the county already. I just think we've got to get it, take a look at what we have. You know, I believe, there are a lot of these things that I, in the budget places I feel I have to cut, which I think we need. And I think we've just got some real hard decisions because I think there's a limit on what the voters and the taxpayers can afford.
Okay, so that should revisit. Raise appropriate a hundred thousand for the purchase of a used ambulance. I haven't had a chance to really talk with you guys about this, I haven't had a chance to talk with the chief about it. I'm sure of the fact that we had a meeting, held a public hearing. Fairner did put regarding the usage of the existing capital reserve funds, which was not terribly supported by those of the dependents or the board. So we're asking at this point for a hundred thousand for the purpose of purchasing a used ambulance.
Are we going to add any other warrant article for taking over the ambulance service? Because this gets us an ambulance, it doesn't get us any staffing. One of our options said in December of two thousand and twenty-four, we were going to, I think it was adding four staff people. So I think there's another piece that needs to go on with this warrant article unless you're just saying just purchase the ambulance.
Right now, that's what I'm saying, is just purchasing the ambulance. We've got to get a third party in to look at that business plan, which hopefully the RFD will be out there next Wednesday with any luck, to get a third-party contractor in here to look at the business plan and say to you guys, this makes sense or here are some adjustments that we should make. And I, again, I haven't had a chance to talk with the chief, but he's certainly here to be able to answer any questions you may have.
And I assume that we're doing the hundred thousand now because the ambulances are, the ambulance is sitting there and available. And we don't want it to go away.
Well, and that, I mean, I can't speak to the chief, but that certainly could happen.
That said, if we move forward with that, I think we'll reach out to current owner and see if we can come up with something in writing that would be cases for the ambulance for us. Now, he does have four, so you may see a transaction or something, but we looked at four different ones.
Are four of them all about at the same state?
Roughly the same. We, we picked one that we felt was in better shape, the other three used kind of a concept.
Chief, if we get and get an ambulance and we pay a hundred thousand for it and you, you get a voter come out and say, well, what are you going to do with it? You have it, I mean, we're going to need to answer that question. And if we go forward with this, we're going to need a good reasoning why we would purchase an ambulance if we're not going to use it or have any kind of, you know, staff for it.
Yeah, I think one of the options that we do have is, you know, we could certainly add language in here. You know, if it comes back and says, the evaluation of the business plan, if it comes back and says, yes, that this makes sense, you should take it for voters for consideration. Timing's everything. And we have an opportunity to secure a used vehicle now, fully equipped, that's in good condition. If all of a sudden, that report comes back and says, no, stay with your contracted service. If you guys are maybe agents to expend this money, it never moves. It basically dies on the vine.
It falls explained properly, because we don't want to make it look like we're trying to force citizens into an ambulance service either way. Like, we're buying an ambulance, and either way, whether you guys worry or not, we're going to do an ambulance service, you know? I think that just needs to be explained when it, you know, it's, it, there's a value in what's out there for this ambulance. We just need to make sure everyone's well aware of what we're trying to do.
I certainly wouldn't want to come in and ask for eight hundred and fifty million dollars for two ambulance, two hundred and fifty ambulance says, where's that coming from?
Okay, so if we, if we have this and we're going to at some point decide whether to go or not, why wouldn't we add a little bit more in order to hire staff? If we get, it's a good deal and we're going to go forward with it, here's the staff that goes with it in December of two thousand and twenty-four, which was one of your options, which sounds a little better to me, is let us have an ambulance, but we're going to just sit it over here. You know, because we don't have anybody to, to drive it unless we can have some kind of a program going with the staff that we have or, or something, there has to be something more.
I, I think, and again, we haven't really discussed some of this approach in any great length, but I think an option that would certainly be on the table, if we move forward with the purchase of the used ambulance, that number, based on our correspondence with the current owner, will also allow us to make any minor mechanical repairs and so forth and, and put it in a position to be licensed. That said, while these other options are swirling in the background, this could conceivably allow us, number one, to, to be teed up with some type of fire rescue operation of the ambulance, even in a backup capacity, January of twenty-five, obviously other things have to happen. It also opens up what I'll call the Tuffinboro or the Centarosseby model, where they have a contracted service today, but they run a backup ambulance that's licensed to, in Tuffinboro's case, the town of Tuffinboro. When there are multiple calls, multiple patients, a mass casualty incident, that rolls. It wouldn't, it's not the primary ambulance, it wouldn't be out the door every day, for the most part.
Could you do that with your existing staff?
Yeah, that's my point.
Most likely, yeah. No, I, we, we'd have to gear up, you know, some training and, and some things like that, but we'd have to very specifically define what the contracted service would be responsible for versus what we would be responsible for. It's certainly doable, it's being done around us.
It, it just seems then there's a purpose for it.
Right.
That's what I...
Especially if you explain it that way.
Yeah, you know, it's, so it's just not sitting there that we will be able to have...
Now, I don't think our intent at all would be, and again, there's so many moving parts to this. If we pursue a partial contract, you know, I think part of the discussion we've already had with the current contractor was to move into a backup role at some point during the life of that contract and the number cost to reflect that. Would obviously have to spell all this out, but it's certainly something to consider.
I, I guess what I'm saying is I'd like, I would like more than just the ambulance, that we put something or some explanation of how, how we're going to use it, that we're not going to just purchase it and have it sit there.
You can just put in the warrant article that the, the purchase of the ambulance is going to be used as a transition to a fire station-based system with our existing manpower, manpower and blah, blah, going into two thousand and twenty-five.
We can work on that.
That's what I'm asking for, I'm asking for some other word.
Depending on the third party who are due on how we choose to move forward with that supply.
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs to be more than that.
Okay, so we'll work on some additional language for that. And then the last one is waiting for particulars, actually, Amy scheduled a meeting with them today, historical society regarding a lease. There's some verbal language that's got to be put into this, but this is a, a starting point. I think the big thing for the board to consider is what's the term that you're looking to do. I penciled twenty years into... I penciled 20 years in here because that's what we did with Barrera of Great House. I do believe there was a 99-year lease with the historical society. I don't think that's really contemporary these days. It seems like 10 or 20 may be a good. Is there a limit on the number of years that we can lease? I don't think there is, but I do know that the attorney cautioned us about the long-term leases. I heard something about five years. I don't remember.
Five years that we can, the board of select can lease the property for five years.
Anything beyond that, go to the law.
And my understanding, we're probably going to get a warrant article for our locker room agreements to extend them in time. Are we, that's, you're going to see that come in? You're expecting that to come in as a petition?
I would assume that's going to come in as a petition. And my support is the selectmen would like to ink one of those, ink those warrant articles. But I would anticipate it'd be petitions.
And we decided not to go forward with the IT expendable trust. Am I correct?
At this point, I don't, I don't think we can.
I just was reading the minutes. Okay, I just wanted to.
As good of a program as it is, in the interest of trying to keep this thing contained as much as possible, I don't think we can.
I just read it in the minutes that we were looking at it and I just wanted to clarify, that's where I started.
So those are the warrant articles, at least to this point.
Thank you, Jim. No, we, I understand we're, I think Chuck is here. We've got to table that discussion on the rates for the Popwell and Ice Arena. So we're down to other business. Do we have any other business this evening?
The only one I have is this DES report that I thought was forwarded to all the select board, but I don't think they got it. So I guess if we could have a discussion about it then at the, at the 15th, on their next meeting. Not sure what the report is, Brian. Oh, you did get a copy, but you were away. So it explains our meeting that we had with, there was 12 people there, Linda? 12? 14 of us?
Of different, of all, not just Cam?
It was DES, it was one and current, it was Linda and I and.
And Steve.
Steve walked in the spray fields and there was a ton of information that came from that walk. And I think Linda and I should present it or bring it forward to the board so they understand what we had, what we saw, what went down there. Steve would be valuable to information.
I didn't get that.
It went to Jim. You want to just take, I've scribbled on it, but you can just have mine.
If it's in my inbox.
If it's in my inbox. So Jim, if you could forward it to the board members and blah, blah. I thought I emailed it to Amy. I might not have hit the right, that happens sometimes. Or I didn't attach it.
Put on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss. Anything else on our other business? Committee reports. Start here with Dave on this one.
I had none.
Yeah, getting them written down. I had a planning board meeting two nights ago now. Had a few small items come in there on that. We had a Wolfboro Waters meeting on Monday, I believe it was. That was a lengthy one with a lot of good discussions going on there and stuff. And that was it for me. Linda?
Yeah, Brian and I were lucky to have two budget committee meetings. One was the review of the 2023 budget and one was starting the 2024 budget. We did the electric department and welfare. Welfare was the other one. I had a meeting of the Friends of Popwellen last night. Wolfboro has booked wildlife encounters and are going to have games and events at the Great Hall. Bob and Marlo, Peter Heimlich and Carol Ramsey-Gland are going to be over at the Congo Church. Brewster is going to Inneserbrook Hall, is going to have bingo. And we're hopefully keeping our fingers crossed that the outside skating rink and great weather will be there. And we're still working on an escape house on the rail, at the railroad station. So we'll be in many different places. Wolfboro Water, I've, I read you our issues. And then the Wolfboro Waters Assessing Subcommittee met and we're reviewing some of the data they have gotten this year. And they've also sent their lab to UNH for the winter since we didn't have a place for it. And UNH is going to do some of the analysis for the Subcommittee. The Ad Hoc Sidewalk Committee met and Mike Villado is the chairman. He is the owner of Front For Cellar. What? And Brian and I, as he said, we toured the wastewater treatment plant. We toured the spray fields and the RIB site. And we looked at the trails and we'll deal with that at another time. And I spent one day going around handing out our afternoon EDC invitations to the business update that's going to take place Monday, right?
Seems like we're connected at the hip because everything you just said is everything that I've done.
Well.
Except for Wolf, except for your Wolfboro Water, I mean, yeah.
And I was at a chamber meeting this morning and we will be getting a letter from the chamber.
I missed my chamber meeting this morning. Luckily Linda was there. Appreciate that. We had a zoning board meeting on Monday night.
So other than everything Linda already said, the budget committee meeting we've entered, the EDC and everything, I, will be, stay tuned for this. Nancy Herschberg and I, she went to a conference and she's been looking at how the state is going to be changing the regulations where destinations can get Level 3 EV chargers, which are the high-speed chargers. So I reached out to the woman who's in charge of all global EV chargers for Tesla. And she connected us with someone who is going to be discussing the possibility of having two high-speed Tesla chargers installed at the library. We're in the early, early stages, so we don't know if they'll pick us and say, okay. But they do have them at a Circle K gas station in Meredith and they have one also down in Rochester. So that puts us about almost 30 miles away from both. And in the middle where there is a nice little dead area. So I was happy when I got a text back from her when I reached out to her and then she connected us with someone who's going to look at our situation.
Do those accept Teslas only?
Well, it depends. We can do what's called a magic box. Tesla is now doing, and this would be, I would make it a requirement if we came in, with a magic box, any EV can charge to it. Now, this would not be a free charger and it would not be something that the municipality owned. It would be a joint venture with Tesla. It would be funded by the state 80% and by Tesla 20% through the Energy Committee and the town of Wolfboro. So it would be a joint partnership like our other one. It would not cost the taxpayers any more.
Okay, tell me, there's a report.
Well, I had a, had a Clydesdale. I saw three concerts. I left 82-degree temperature to come home to, snow this morning. But in all seriousness, the 15th, you have a meeting scheduled. Casey will be stepping in for me on that evening. I have a prior commitment. We need to continue moving forward the path on warrant articles. We do have some availability on November 27th through the 29th. If the board is so inclined so that we can hopefully maybe get some of these close to finalized for our September, or September, December 6 meeting, if you'd like. Because we've got to get the bond one done right around that 6 timeframe to get it noticed and all of those good items.
I could do Monday, the 27th. I'd prefer not to do the 28th because Brian and I and you, Jim, are going to be out the 29th and the 30th with the budget committee. I'd like to have at least a day in between.
Go 27?
That would work best for me. Depends upon how other people.
I'm open on the 27th.
I can't on the 28th, the 27th is good. So I'll get a meeting scheduled for the 27th. Basically just to go a little more in articles, a little more in depth. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Questions for the press? We're not on live tonight, so now we'll see them in the audience. Public input? Oh, Barry, for you, okay?
I have a public announcement request out there. We're still looking for a Christmas tree. We're down to the wire, believe it or not. It's two weeks out. We usually have one by now, so. If anybody's got a 30-foot-plus fir spruce in town, contact the Chamber of Congress or contact me at the Electric Department or Judy. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Public input? Is there nothing? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Linda to go into non-public, all in favor. Thank you, everybody.